All right, I see it's 4:00. So I'm going to call the June 1st, 2021 Select Board Meeting to order. And welcome, everyone. Will the clerk please call who's present?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, and we're all present from Select Board. Thank you very much. We are going to be moving into executive session. So let me let me ask that we return to executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property that in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and to return to open session of today's Select Board Meeting at an estimated time of 4:35 p.m.
Move to enter executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and to return to the open session of today's Select Board Meeting, estimated to occur at approximately 4:35 p.m.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So if you'll adjourn to, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates.
That's unanimous, the chair so declares.
Could I ask Jeremy if he could just send me the link again? It's in my email somewhere, but not in the latest one for this, for executive session.
Yeah, Friday, 5:36 p.m. was his email that had it.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so everyone, see you in the executive session as soon as you can get there. Thank you. All right, I see we have a quorum. So I am going to reopen the June 1, 2021 Select Board Regular Session, which we had opened previously, and we're back to continue the session. So the first order of business is the Consent Agenda, which includes the Town Accountant Warrants, May 26, 2021, May 27, 2021, and gift acceptance from the Boston Foundation for $2,500 to the NNI gift account, to whom we thank them very much for this. Do I hear a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss. And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, that's for the Select Board members with one absent for this vote, and the chair so declares. All right, the Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just, there's a printed report in your packet. And I have one item that is not in the printed report. So I'll run through the items quickly. As you know, that last week, the governor extended or filed legislation to extend certain portions of the executive orders, the emergency orders, rather, specifically related to outdoor dining and the open meeting law exemptions that allow us to do what we're doing here this evening. I know legislation has also been filed. The open meeting law extension, I think, goes through September, and the outdoor dining goes through November 29th. So provided the legislature acts on the bills the governor has filed, which I know they're discussing, we should be able to continue to do this. Otherwise, they both would end next week on the 15th. So we are closely monitoring that, and we will hopefully have some clarity from the state as soon as possible. The other thing is, I think I had mentioned this before, he also, you know, eliminated the mask mandates and occupancy restrictions, and we have adopted those for, in most cases, transportation. I think certain childcare and vulnerable population situations, those mask mandates are still in effect. So certainly, there are a few of our departments that are subject to it still, because they're in those categories. But the majority of town offices now do not have a mask mandate or occupancy restrictions. I talked last week about, prior to the governor's announcement of applying legislation, we were trying to get our hands around what we were going to have for in-person meeting space, which is now allowed. Even though we can do Zoom, we can also now meet in person. So I just listed the meeting spaces we have in town that are available now. We have a few spaces that are really staff-only, mostly because of public access requirements that those spaces don't meet. And then we have a few rooms that are not available, because they're either being used as office spaces, or they're in the townhouse. So you have that list, and so we'll, or the committees can, you know, contact us and see what we have available for space. If meetings are generally broadcast or recorded by Minute Man Media Network, we now have the ability to go to basically any meeting room and provide that service. As kind of a fun item, you have the Complete Streets Project for Commonwealth Ave. The design is at the 25% level. That's going to, I think, make a, with bump outs and certain other traffic calming things, that plan as it comes together, I think, will be a nice visioning exercise for West Concord, and, you know, eventually lead to some needed improvements. And we did include a photo in the report of two electric, or, sorry, three electric lawnmowers that were purchased by CPW as opposed to gas diesel models. So those are, I would guess that over a certain number of years, we'll see more and more of those in our inventories, as long as they continue to perform. A couple of good items from the fire departments. Lieutenant Dave Nichols was awarded the Certification of Fire Investigator I. And Chief Judge tells me that in the world of fire investigation, this is a significant credential to have, and a tremendous achievement for Lieutenant Nichols. So we congratulate him. And we also had two new firefighters start this week. Stephanie Hamlin and Connor Finery started their work. So it's kind of exciting to get some new folks on the department, and as, you know, watch them develop and hopefully stay with Contra Fire for a long time.
Can I ask a quick question, Stephen?
Sure.
Is Stephanie one of several women, or is she one of the first?
We have, we have one of the, we have at least one of the women that's an active firefighter. In fact, the other woman who's on the, you know, in the firefighting force just got promoted to lieutenant. And so we now have two active women, but we have other women that work in the department as well. This is great. I mean, I think it's, it's still not as common, but it's nice that we're able to have, you know, gender diversity in our departments, police department as well. So Rod Rydell and Rebecca Purcell have been appointed to the Cemetery Committee. Those are town manager appointments. IT continues to work through the, you know, the Office 360 conversions. It's been very time-consuming, but it's gone well. I've been converting for a few weeks and have noticed some improvements in my services I get through Office, Microsoft Office. And then we're also doing our cybersecurity training. In fact, while I was watching an online meeting, I was able to complete my training today as well. Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, they are having a meeting this week, and they'll be discussing items, they'll be discussing the trail counts that they did a week or so ago, and go through some of that data and look at what that kind of, if there's any conclusions to be drawn from that initial amount of data. And then there's a note in there about the Warner's Pond dredging and a bit of an explanation about that project. And then there was a, this is related to Christopher Heights. We did get the notice of finding of no significant impact and notice of intent to require release of funds. This is a relatively standard notice of town, I shouldn't say standard. It is a notice the town receives when funding is being released for a project that the town is involved in. I don't know, I see Liz Ross here, I don't know if she can explain any better than that, but it's a part of that project that was anticipated. But I just wanted to let the board know that that had happened.
Any questions for the Town Manager?
And then the, sorry, the item I don't, I didn't have in the packet, that I just was, just saw today, is there'll be a notice going out to water customers about bromate, the level of bromate above the drinking water standards. I believe I made the same report a year ago. It's a part of an annual, there's testing that is required every year, and if we exceed a certain amount, then we have to send a notice. And I think as the notice that we're sending out lines, there's no boil orders or anything else. We're just required to let you know there's been exceedance, but we do not believe that this is, or under the, under how it's, not, we don't believe, under how it's defined, it's not an emergency that would require some kind of modification of, you know, water use or anything like that.
Okay. Any questions for the Town Manager? Matt?
Yeah, just two quick questions. One, will the Complete Streets enhancements to Commonwealth Avenue include the long-anticipated wayfinding improvements for West Concord Village? And then, secondly, on that HUD notice, why is the city of Newton involved?
On the first question, I'm not sure. I don't, I don't think that that's been included as a part of the Complete Streets aspect. I do know from talking to Marsha that the wayfinding effort kind of went on hiatus for a variety of reasons. And so she and I are talking about how to resurrect that effort, but I don't think it's formally a part of the Complete Streets.
Would seem like the right time, right? If you're going to be making sidewalk changes and so forth.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to the Complete Streets program about that. And then on the other one, I would defer to Liz. I actually don't know the answer to that.
So these are the local home funds that the town is sponsoring for the project that are administered out of the city of Newton.
So they just, I don't know why.
It's a consortium, it's a consortium.
A consortium.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, Terry?
I had a few questions about the meeting rooms. I just want to clarify, the ones that are not available, that, my understanding is that's because of COVID. In order to accommodate the distances needed for staff to work, you've had to put them a safe distance apart, and now you'll have to reconfigure those meeting rooms? Is that, is that correct?
Well, in some cases, yes. I think in the case of Harvey Wheeler, those rooms were used for office spaces. Church Street, second floor, was available, was used as office space. And the Kaiser Road, same thing. Hunt, I'm not exactly sure about. And then the other two, the townhouse hearing room and the Select Board meeting room are just related to the renovations of the townhouse.
Okay, I guess what I'm really trying to figure out is those dates in parentheses, where it says like July or August or whatever, is that when you anticipate they will be available for meetings?
They are anticipated. So right now, the Facilities Department, which converted, which, you know, did most of the conversions, have scheduled the un-converting of them. And that's, that's what those dates reflect. And so as we sit here now, you know, townhouse, the townhouse, we believe, will be back in there by August, based on what we know today.
Okay.
And that's the, sorry, go ahead there.
Well, that's great, that's okay. And then my other question about the meeting rooms is the first group, where it says staff only. Assuming that if a citizen needs to meet with staff, and they can make an appointment, like if they have to meet with the building commissioner or somebody like that, they can make an appointment, and that staff person can reserve that meeting room? Is that correct?
Sure, or they can meet in a room that's accessible.
Okay, awesome. And then my last question is about Christopher Heights. I wanted to know if we have a timetable about when we estimate construction would start and when it would be completed.
Well, then I'm glad Liz is here to provide an update on that, because I haven't been briefly.
So we meet monthly with the Christopher Heights team, and they're currently looking at a, probably a January or February closing, which would be all the financing would come into the project, and then, including their building permit, so then they would start construction there. And I believe it's a year of construction.
Okay, so something like spring of '23, the units might be available, something like that.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, I think it's fair to say that the pandemic has impacted that timing as well, and a short number of other projects.
Sure. Assisted living is really like a, you know, a product that really suffered from COVID in terms of investors, both, and they have three investors. They have the state funds, they have their low-income housing tax credit investor, and they have their permanent financing bank investor. So they're working with all three parties, you know, on their financing.
Any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, if not, I think we'll move on to the Chair's Report. I'll just comment that I noticed on the website today that the 2020 Annual Town Report is now available. And for those people who attend town meeting, they will be able to pick up a regular paper book copy of the report. As Select Board knows, we have put in place a number of items to be prepared for moving for the 250th celebration. And one of the items that we did put in place, as the state and national and other efforts are just now ramping up, so that we know where to jump in in that whole cycle and process, was to approve a request to the U.S. Post Office for commemorative stamp for the three towns, Concord, Lincoln, and Lexington. And I was informed by the town of Lexington that they just now voted this last week, and the letter has now been submitted to the U.S. Postal Service. And then the other comment I'll make is that we have received, there is correspondence that speaks, is asking for Select Board support specifically for the reformatory branch trail discussion. And the correspondence, in the correspondence, they wanted a decision by June, to make an announcement to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail by June 13th. We are not, by June 3rd, excuse me, which is two days from now. First of all, it's impossible for us to respond to a request such as that. But more importantly, I think it is on the continuing task list for the Select Board as a major topic that they want to address shortly after town meeting. So I just wanted to state that publicly. And that concludes my remarks, Chair's remarks. So the first item on the agenda is the Massachusetts School Building Authority Statement of Interest for the Middle School Funding. The, in your packet, you saw a statement that the Select Board needs to sign. The school committee, and I see Cynthia Rainey is here from the school committee, did in fact vote on this on the 26th, is my understanding. And the, as you know, I think we've applied for MSBA funds. Is it four times now, Cynthia?
Correct.
Yeah, four times, unsuccessfully. And while an additional application may also result in the same outcome, I think both the school committee, and I would guess the Select Board, as well as the Town Manager and Superintendent, agreed that it is in the best interest for the citizens of the town that every effort has been made to pursue potential funding, should this application be accepted. So Cynthia, Cynthia, would you like to add any additional comments to that?
No, I think he summarized it very well. The submission is essentially identical every year. You don't really need to do a great deal of work to make the submission. We feel it's in the town's best interest to go ahead and make the submission to the MSBA.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion.
Move that having convened an open meeting on May 25, 2021, and June 1, 2021, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Select Board and the School Committee of Concord, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the Superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated May 28, 2021, for the Concord Middle School located at 835 Old Marlborough Road and 1231 Old Marlborough Road, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future for priorities number two, number five, and number seven, with deficiencies as follows. Priority number two, elimination of severe overcrowding. This condition has been addressed by use of an elementary school being converted to use as a second middle school building in 1967. Priority number five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems, such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems, to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. The two buildings that serve as the middle school have significant capital requirements, with roofing, HVAC, and other systems reaching obsolescence after nearly 50 years. Priority number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. Having two buildings located a mile apart requires duplication of many services and increases staffing costs significantly. These funds could be used to improve the direct educational experience of the middle school students housed in the pebbly and sandborne buildings. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town, the city, town, or regional district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
And I believe you meant to say Regional School District, but you captured it, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. And Susan, thanks for doing that. We are required to read the exact wording as provided. So, very good. Is there any other discussion on this? If not, I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is a request of transfer for the right of first refusal for 100 Eldenbrook. This is an opportunity for the town to preserve affordable housing unit and to accomplish that by transferring the right of first refusal to Concord Housing Development Corporation. So Select Board has already discussed this. Do I hear a motion?
Move to authorize the Town Manager to execute an assignment of the town's right of first recusal to CHDC. Authorize the Town Manager to commit $570,000 to CHDC to acquire, renovate, and sell 100 Eldenbrook Lane to an 80% AMI-eligible purchaser, and retain $50,000 from the proceeds of the sale for the CHDC Small Grant Program, and the remainder of proceeds back to the town Affordable Housing Fund. And authorize the Town Manager to request that Town Council assists CHDC with the transactions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify, that this is the buydown of a 140% unit to an 80% level. And money did pay for renovations, just to clarify.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions?
Well, also to clarify that we set out the money, but we get a significant portion back after the sale, and that portion goes back into the Affordable Housing Fund.
That's correct, and was included in the motion. Okay, so I'm now ready for the clerk to call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo.
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman.
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous, and the chair so declares. Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is a request to the state legislative representatives to include Battle Road Town Representatives on the Commission for the 200th Anniversary of the American Revolution. So as I briefly noted in my Chair's remarks, during the year, the Select Board voted on the letter of request to the U.S. Post Office to commemorate the event, recognizing individual stamps for Lexington, Concord, and Lincoln. We also approved the charge for the 2025 Coordinating Committee or Executive Committee, I believe we called it. And additionally, I, we've had discussions with the National Park and Battle Road towns related to the Massachusetts Transportation Department's upgrade of 2A prior to 2025. And I know that our Tourism Center and Department has been already anticipating many activities and things that they need to look forward for this. So as I said earlier, there are, and there are many other activities going on at this point in terms of people doing some initial thinking forward. Just now, the state is gearing up in terms of defining the number of representatives who will be on a commission specifically to celebrate the 250th Anniversary of the American Revolution. Senator Barrett has recently, I think as recent as Thursday, included in a budget legislation that's on the table right now for FY 2022, some amended language that would define the composition of the 250th Anniversary of the American Revolution Committee, or Commission as it may end up being called. This new wording that was submitted includes specific representation from the towns of Lincoln, Concord, Lexington, Arlington, as Battle Road towns. Cambridge is also, happens to be in the amended language, as does Boston. And these representatives, the current language in this legislation would have the Select Board defining, of each of these towns, defining the representatives, or in the case of Boston, the mayor. So I think Senator Barrett has indicated that this would be the time for the Select Board, and there may be other times as it goes through the process, but felt that this was the time when a letter supporting the inclusion of the Battle Road towns, and specifically our own town, in that committee representation would be important. So are there any comments or questions about this? If not, I would entertain a motion. Sorry, I see Mike, Mike, thank you. Michael Lawson is here, joining us today. Hi, Mike. Yes, please.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Linda, just to indicate that the
that the reason that they're asking for support now is the House has already passed a version of this bill. And that version of the bill does not include representation from the Battle Road towns. Senator Barrett's language in the Senate bill was approved, and now it's going to go to a House committee. And so, the issue is for the Select Boards of the various towns to weigh into the House so that they would agree to the new language in the Senate's bill. But that is going to happen this week. So, rather than a letter or in addition to the letter, I would hope that the Select Board would authorize the chair to contact our Representative Tammy Govea and indicate if it is the case, their support for the Senate language.
Thank you for that clarification, Mike, and thank you for your work on this. All right. Susan, I would entertain a motion, please.
All right. Move to authorize the chair to send a letter to Concord State Legislative Representatives to include the Battle Road Town Representatives on commission for 250th anniversary of American Revolution.
Second.
Okay. And did that, sorry, Susan, did that motion also include contacting immediately our?
State representative? Let me restate that. A move to authorize the chair to immediately contact our state representative and to send a letter to the Concord State Legislative Representatives to include the Battle Road Town Representatives on the commission for the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. And thank you, Mike, for being here too, for that clarification. Let's see here. The next item on the agenda is the Thoreau Farm Battle Road Trail. We are being asked to provide a letter of support of the trail concept. And I see Margaret or Mary Briggman's here and Molly Everly. Okay. Would one of you like to speak to this item? Mary?
I'd like to also thank you and appreciate the opportunity to be at this meeting. Court Booth, also a member of the board at Thoreau Farm, has been most involved with the process so far for defining the trail and working with the National Park and the town offices that oversee the geography. So, actually, Court, if you're available there, maybe you're the best spokesperson.
Thank you, Molly. Hi, Court.
Thank you. Thank you, Molly. Thank you, Linda. Well, first, a public apology to Matt Johnson for not warning him about the nettles on the trail. Matt and I took a look at the trail that has been carved out in a very tentative way to see what was possible. What we envision and have actually extensively studied is a eight tenths of a mile trail that would go north to south, connecting the Battle Road Trail, the very busy, popular Battle Road Trail administered by the National Park and the Thoreau Farm and Thoreau birthplace. This would traverse National Park land next to the land under cultivation by the National Park. It would then cross a gorgeous marshland in a way that's environmentally sensitive with what's known as helical piers, a simple elevated bridging system that we believe would be DEP-approved. And then it would enter townland as it approaches the Elm Brook neighborhood immediately to the west of the Elm Brook neighborhood. There are two Concord jurisdictions there. One, the Hebland, as it's called, which I believe falls under the Select Board jurisdiction directly. And then, as it approaches the neighborhood and Virginia Road, it falls under the NRC. The idea of the trail is a connector trail, interconnectivity being such a wonderful idea with our trail systems, our trail networks. The Elm Brook neighborhood is very keen on the concept. But also, environmentalists and naturalists and those of a historical bent are very interested in this because it's a spectacular piece of property, number one. Number two, it does have some habitat for species that aren't too common in Concord, species that have migrated away from great meadows, for example. And then, very importantly, it connects the, what we like to refer to as the Two Revolutions that put Concord on the map, the Political Revolution of 1775 and the Intellectual Revolution, as it were, in the mid-1800s, which is represented by the Thoreau House. We have done, as I say, extensive work to prepare for it. We're now at a point where we want to bring this to engineers and designers so that we can then do the permitting work. That's going to require some fundraising. And for fundraising, we need some informal, how do I put this? Some endorsement from the Select Board, just as we need it from the National Park, and that's already been forthcoming, that would allow us to seek funding, have the legitimacy necessary to raise funds on behalf of the Thoreau Farm Trust that would be the fiscal agent, that would then build a trail, design, permit, and build a trail that would then fall under the jurisdiction of the National Park for its portion and fall under the jurisdiction of the town with the help of the Trails Committee, which is very involved. And we also understand the necessity of bringing along with a trail an endowment. When we look at a budget, we are somewhere in the $300,000-plus range because of the need to elevate portions of this in a way that's careful and sensitive. So, we're at this critical juncture where, in order to get that design and engineering and permitting money, we need to do our asks. In order to do our asks, we need evidence that the town knows that this is happening, that you endorse the concept. So, we're really asking for a concept endorsement at this point, knowing full well the town can't compromise its later need to do objective approvals of its own. So, we understand any endorsement at this time would not obligate the town to any future approvals. So, that's where we stand right now. We're open to any questions you might have. We thank Mr. Johnson for actually taking a look at it. I think, Matt, you might speak to the unique vistas out there that might be quite attractive to all kinds of folks who both live in Concord, but those who visit us as well.
Yes, thanks, Court. And beyond the very impressive nettles, there are a number of great features along the site that we visited. So, one that was very striking right away is an American chestnut tree that's growing right along Elm Brook Place. So, that's not something you see every day. And then, we also encountered cedar apple rust along our path. It just, you know, again, on one visit, a couple of really interesting phenomena. And then, of course, as Court said, the opportunity to connect the two most significant, I think, historical eras in Concord with a single trail and to provide more opportunities for kind of looping around in a more pleasant way for those that start off from, you know, Concord and not having to go on the access road to Hanscom Field to get to Virginia Road, for example. So, many, many opportunities from this trail. There are some challenges, especially with, I think, the invasives that hopefully could be, you know, put back a little bit as a result of this project. I know it's kind of an ongoing struggle. But even with that in mind, there are many, many assets here. So, strongly support this idea.
There are beautiful cedars to be saved. There is an American elm that is truly magnificent and somewhat rare. We saw a bittern there, which is something of great interest to the birders. As to who's with us on the call, Linda, you noted that we have Margaret Carroll Bergman with us and Molly Everly. Margaret is the executive director of the Thoreau Farm Trust, the nonprofit that manages that beautiful house that we've been able to restore. And Molly Everly, a board member, is also the treasurer.
Great. So, Court, I'll open up with just a couple of questions. I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. The Thoreau Farm would be the fiscal agent, if I understood you correctly?
Yes, because we believe, as a nonprofit with our history and our mission, we're well-suited to seek out foundation grants and have done so before and would actually seek some previous funders to return to us.
Great. And then, the other question is, is this strictly a walking trail?
It is intended as a walking trail. We've had many conversations about the fact that bikers do use the Battle Road Trail and that mountain bikers like exciting trails. We don't want this to be an exciting trail for bikers because the folks that we're working with who help us be sensitive to the natural landscape up there say that overuse by bikes is not going to help the bird population there. It's going to reduce it if there is a lot of bike traffic. So, the National Park has already agreed that they would sign it in order to discourage it. In their limited capacity, they would try to enforce it as well. We also believe that the way we construct the bridge would be excellent for walkers and not particularly fun for bikers. So, bikers could use it, but it would probably not show up on a attractive bike route for eastern Massachusetts bikers.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the Select Board while we have these individuals here? Terry?
Well, I think this is a really exciting project, and I too was hoping to walk the site. And unfortunately, the dates didn't work out, but I hope to walk it in the future. And thank you all for working on it. It's very exciting. And I'm wondering, I might have seen this, but I don't remember right now what your timeframe is. Are you trying to finish this in time for the 250th? Or is that not?
Excellent question, Terry. The answer is yes. And we consider that an ambitious goal, but indeed doable. The symbolism of tying it to the 250th and being able to gift it to the town and the National Park is not lost on us.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I was wondering, Court, or Molly, or Margaret, do any of you know where this falls within, and it may not have been captured, with any of our priorities for the trails in Concord in terms of your, the interconnected, interconnectivity aspects?
Well, I can say, first of all, that the Trails Committee didn't have this on their radar until we brought it their way. And the next thing we knew, the entire Trails Committee showed up to work on the rough draft of it, so to speak, with us. The, there is connectivity directly from Battle Road to the trails that surround Hanscom and go north into Bedford up to Middlesex Community College, where a trail terminates. So, there is that connectivity. And without any urging from us, I think it was a selectman from Bedford sought us out to ask if this was actually happening because they were quite pleased to hear it. Beyond that, we don't have greater designs for interconnectivity yet, Jane.
Thank you.
So, Court, when you referred to the Trails Committee showing up to help you work through the design, which committee are you referring to?
This was, we've worked, we've had a great deal of technical advice and guidance from Delia Kay, what to do, what not to do in order to try to put together, first, the concept, then the plan, and then execute on it. The Trails Committee is the Concord Trails Committee, which I believe is appointed by the Select Board, chaired by Bob White. They came and visited, looked at the tentative route that we had laid out with the help of Mass Audubon and Mass Ecological. They were our consultants. And the Trails Committee took it upon themselves to immediately say that on the Concord side, they would propose modifications of the actual route, and they moved it a little bit east in order to get it on more upland terrain, which would be easier to maintain and drier.
Thank you.
They dove right in.
I know that your group has been working with Delia Kay for some time now. So, and that the Trails Committee had been involved. So, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to authorize the chair to send a letter of support for the proposed Thoreau Farm Battle Road Trail.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk, any other discussion? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay. That's unanimous and so declares. Well, good luck to everyone with your project and getting the funding and support that you're looking for. So terrific.
We're very grateful, and we will keep you informed. Thank you so much. And Terry, we look forward to getting out there with you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item. I've asked Terry to speak to a proposed Select Board summer meeting schedule. But before she starts, I just want to say, and we can't say this enough, this has been an extremely tough year on, year plus, 15 months going on, 15 months longer, for all of our town employees as well as the Select Board, both groups of which have done their best to deal with the ever-evolving changes that came down with pandemic legislation, regulations, and the need for local adoption, but also trying to move forward the town's active and aggressive schedule in terms of meeting their goals and the Select Board meeting its goals. And so, I think we can't say that enough. And along the way, however, I know that this, I can speak for the Select Board that in this 15-month period, we have met every single week and then some to accomplish this, which is double what previous Select Boards had done in terms of their every other meeting weeks. And so, that's my way of saying that both town employees, town committees, and the Select Board need to find some relief where they can this summer, not only in terms of meeting schedules, meeting schedules, but also their vacation schedules. So with that, Terry, I'm turning this over to you to facilitate this discussion. I'm sure you all have active takers for any breaks you can give us.
Okay, thank you, Linda. This will be very brief. I do agree that summer is really the only time of year where we can take a break, and we really need one this year, the staff as well as the Select Board, as well as probably all the committees in town. The late town meeting, usually right after town meeting, people take a deep breath. It's, you know, we want to really get going again in September. So this is the time that we really have. So with that in mind, we asked each member to send in what your vacation schedule might be, if you know it. Now, I know mine had to change around in the last two weeks. Things are still evolving because of COVID. So I don't think that Jeremy received anybody's vacation schedule yet. So we put together a draft, and I think it's on page thirty-five in the packet, still draft. If you know that you really can't make one of those meetings, and I want to include Henry here, please let Jeremy know right away. We can still change things around. But if we don't hear in another week or so, we'll probably start scheduling these meetings. So one of the things that I'm trying to do is put in a lot of breaks. So the idea would be that we would have two regular Select Board meetings each month, regular business meetings, where we do the consent calendar, we do the nominations, we do the liaison reports, we do all the warrant, we do all the regular business that we need to do. And thinking about having one, what I want to call focused meeting each month. We have quite a number of focused topics that we want to just spend some real concentrated time on. For example, when the people from NMI StarNet were here, we came up with this possible idea that we just need to focus on that one day. Another one that came up was, how are we going to fund the middle school? What are some alternative revenue sources? And we had a lot of suggestions for that. So we have about a half a dozen of these type of topics that would make for a focused meeting. And of course, since the meeting's already scheduled, if any kind of timely event were to have to come up, we could take that up as well. So I think this would allow for both breaks and focus, both of which we really need. So that's just a draft right now, and I ask people again to take a look, and as soon as possible, send any conflicts to Jeremy.
So Terry, do you want to also ask if anyone knows of any of these dates being a serious conflict when they would not be able to zoom in or they won't be available at all? At least get some indication now.
Sure. Yeah, I just wanted to note that earlier today, we received an invitation to attend a racial equity webinar training series for Massachusetts municipal officials that take place on June twenty-first and June twenty-eighth from three thirty till five P. M. And so I was wondering if maybe to accommodate that, we could defer our meetings by an hour on those two dates.
So say the dates again, June twenty-one and twenty-eight, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you're proposing that we would meet at five P. M.
Instead of at three thirty, or we could meet at seven P. M. I don't know. But, you know, just if we meet at four, that would prevent attending this. It does seem like a worthwhile.
Sure.
I agree.
The entire board to attend.
Okay. Is there preference for five P. M. or seven P. M.?
I think given it's the summer, I think the five P. M. would help. People would still have the evening to themselves.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I do want to go to seven pretty soon, as Matt indicated. And, you know, we're going to be moving anyway to the hybrid model, hopefully, if the legislation passes, but we don't know that yet. So.
Yeah, I would say when we go to in-person, that would be good.
Right. That's when we should switch to seven, right? So are you okay with five P. M. on the twenty-first and twenty-eighth of June?
Yes.
Great. If you have any other conflicts, let Jeremy know, and we'll try to move around the breaks versus the meeting dates. Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Okay. Next item is update on White Pond Improvement Project. And I see Ryan Orr and Kate Hodges, our deputy superintendent, deputy town manager is here. So, great.
Hi there. Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen if I can.
Yeah. Let me first say, Kate, before you start, and that is, you know, there have been a great number of forums and public meetings and committee meetings that have addressed the White Pond Improvement Project. But it is certain, and I think the, certainly Kate and others have been extremely responsive to the feedback that they've received along the way and have had many iterations of the plan that they put forward. At a certain point, however, we need to conclude that period of feedback coming in, and the project needs to move. And so Kate, I don't know, I think you're more or less at that point now. And so it would be helpful to hear the update in terms of where you are. So forgive me for interrupting you, but I wanted to say that first.
No, thank you. Thank you very much. So I am really just here with, so I'm Kate Hodges, deputy town manager, and I'm here with Ryan Orr, our facilities director, and we're really here to just give a very brief, high-level overview of sort of where we are and what is a couple of small portions of what we have submitted to NRC for a permitting plan. So this is not, these are not construction documents. They likely will change a couple more times based on feedback that we're getting from NRC, and also whether the variances that we're applying for, the waivers within the twenty-five foot and fifty-foot are granted. So as you know, the town was gifted the property by White Pond Associates, and it was adopted and accepted at special town meeting in two thousand and eighteen. The deed was processed and by the Select Board, and the Select Board officially voted to accept the land in December of nineteen. And so at that time, I was tasked with spearheading the improvement plan. And since then, we've worked hard to identify and get feedback from multiple stakeholders, both in formalized group settings and committees and members of the general public, as well as the seasonal users and the recreation commission. So we had two formal listening sessions during the summer of two thousand and nineteen, and took those comments and ideas and brought them forward to Weston and Sampson, who's the architectural firm, to develop an existing conditions site plan, a survey, and then what we were referring to as the starting, the starting documents, so the ideas. Soon after those tasks were complete, we began developing a master plan which focused on ADA and AAB accessibility, so Americans with Disabilities Act and the Architectural Access Board, as well as stormwater management and the creation of accessible restrooms. Recreation took over the operation of the beach in the summer of two thousand and eighteen. And by the time we entered into the property planning phase, it was very obvious that the focus wasn't just on accessibility in restrooms, but really needed to be on accessibility in stormwater management. And so we ended up abandoning the idea of having the initial phase include permanent restrooms and go for the backup, which is right now a portable restroom trailer that we have there. So again, because of this, the Phase One goals were really identified as ADA and stormwater management, and we moved into the design phase. So in this phase, as Linda kindly said at the beginning, we held fourteen public meetings with eight different groups. We were very clear that this was Concord's Park and that we've been committed to making it Concord's Park. And we wanted to ensure that whatever design aspects we chose mirrored the majority of what the community wanted to see. One of the greatest stakeholders and best sources of information for us through this process has been the White Pond Advisory Committee. And really through their input, there, we've had considerable design changes, different iterations, tried to cost out different types of materials. And we've really tried to create a plan that deals with the pond's specific and unique character. And we've worked hard, really to include most of what they've put in, including a robust planting plan and salvaging or improving upon much of the resources, as much of the resource area as possible. So between all of the public forums that we've had, the committee meetings, the commission meetings, CPC, and some of the other less formalized meetings that we've had, I can say that we've spent about a hundred or so hours talking about this type of plan in public. While we know that some of the choices for certain materials or perhaps a certain location of a tree or an amenity may not be widely accepted by everyone, I really feel confident that what you're looking at tonight is really representative of the majority of the community's desire. It also uses the most sustainable materials that we can reasonably have. It's reasonable as far as maintenance-wise, and it's designed in a very fiscally responsible way. So the map that you're looking at here is the overall bird's-eye view of the project area. The highlighted sections are there because it's very small on the map, and the black and white doesn't really yield itself to being able to read the writing very well. So I tried to depict sort of what I'm talking about and make it a little bit easier. So the yellow lines represent NRC's jurisdictional area. So the first one, which is here, is the twenty-five-foot no-disturb zone, and we've applied for a waiver for a small portion that's within this right here that basically carries this ADA path to the sand's edge. Then what you see here is a rollout map that'll bring someone to the water's edge. So we've applied for a small waiver in that area, and we've also applied for a waiver in the fifty-foot, which is this one here, that of course encompasses the rest of this part of the downward path here and the last final two stairs and the stone area. This section here is the only permanent addition within the twenty-five-foot zone, and it's about four feet in length and thirty-six inches in width. Like I said, we applied for the fifty-foot no-build, and the original plan called for the decking that you see here to be pushed out a little bit more as it's flatter there. But we noticed that if we were able to back that up a bit, we could actually move the structure out of the fifty-foot buffer and more into the hillside. It did require adding a cement retaining wall along the backside of the area, but we felt that was a better course of action than impeding into the fifty-foot zone. It also helped us to save four trees, which are not totally mature, but you can see one here and one here. That one's a four caliber, and the other one is a five caliber. So just scrolling down to the second slide here. This, if you can see this better, this shows a closer look at the twenty-five and fifty-foot zones, again, highlighted in yellow. The green shows the proposed retaining walls, which I just spoke about, and the picnic areas are pink and reflective of our conversations actually with the Disability Committee, who brought to our attention the need to make the sitting and break areas along the pathway both visually and functionally inclusive. Essentially, what they didn't want was to have only benches alongside, which is what we had at the beginning of the plan, because they wanted the ability for if somebody needs to take a break, that it's sort of a destination, and it doesn't necessarily call out that somebody needs to take a break if they're walking through the path. Also, they said that many of the people that they heard from, and we also received this feedback from business, I'm sorry, from beach users, that many people bring their grandchildren here. And so the idea of taking and sitting and resting on, you know, some type of wooden bench that's here while giving either the children an area to play or something to look at in those areas was really something that people wanted to see. This was an area, all of these, that we discussed a great deal with the White Pond Advisory Commission. I think we've come to an understanding that, you know, while they would like to see them just be benches, that we have to make sure that we are hearing from everyone in the community, we're trying to be inclusive of everyone's needs. But we did have porous pavers that we're putting here, so these are not permanent. There's no cement here, and they will help for drainage. And you can see on a couple of slides later that we also have a robust planting plan that will work for more natural stormwater management. The main stairway that's depicted here cuts through the middle of the pathway, and it's a mixture of stabilized stone dust, which is depicted in blue, and granite steps, which are pictured here in red. This area is the lower drop-off. If I could try to position myself, this is actually the driveway that's coming down. These are the spots that belong to the state where we have the fishing pier or the boat launch that's there. As you can see, the ADA spaces will be created at the bottom end here. The ones that we have now are currently not up to code. This one is almost on a slant that's about forty-five degrees, and this one is, has pavement that's all torn up. Both areas will have ADA walkways connecting the parking to the restroom. From this, this is a pull-off with a curb cut here and another curb cut here, and this is a concrete ramp that comes up to the decking that goes over to, this is the area where the restroom is. The purple areas are the existing amenities, including this is the restroom trailer, this is the dumpster, and then this is the existing lifeguard hut. This is also something that was born from the disability committee, saying initially we didn't have the switchback that was here, and what would happen is if you parked here, you would have to go all the way here and then go past the restroom and then hook up with the trail on the other side. Through their comments and comments from the community, it felt like that was an awfully long way to go. We agreed. And so what we've done here is we have a small ramp that's coming down with a series of ramps and then granite curbing. There's no railings or anything here, and this is a five-to-one slope, and so you'll be able to gently get down. We can also talk about whether we want to have a map here for access to this side of the, of the water. This here, this is our stormwater management. It was, like I said, equally important as the accessibility. This map shows all of the stormwater efforts that will be put in place, and they're all in the yellow highlight. These are including a large three-and-a-half-foot-deep infiltration basin, which is right here. The elevation, the bottom elevation is one hundred and eighty-seven point seven, where the highest elevation is about one hundred and ninety-four. So it's not particularly, you know, it's not a far reach from here to there, but the gentle slope of a foot for every, you know, you're going down ten feet per foot, we'll be able to capture some of the stormwater, at least from here. We'll be repitching the parking lot, but we're not doing any pavement. We're just restriping and doing some pitching right here for these new spots, and then this is permeable pavers that are on the side here. There's a long trench that we'll have that runs from Plainfield down along the driveway with several trench drains along the side for both cleanout and maintenance. So these circles right here depict the trench drains. But the most extensive part is the subsurface infiltration systems. So this first one is the largest one, and it will be under the roadway, and it consists of two rows of five, three rows of seven, one row of eleven, and two rows of thirteen storm tech chambers with end caps for cleanouts, and then certain ports that you can have for inspection. And so from here, the residual waters that are captured coming down off the slope will then be infiltrated here. They go into a basin and any leftover water, so most of it will be kept, but we planned this system for the hundred-year storm. So say you get a very large deluge, which sometimes happens, the overflow comes through here. It's about seventy-six linear feet of a twelve-inch pipe to a second stormwater underground infiltration system, which is under the sand, consists of two rows of five, three rows of four, and one row of two chambers. So this system is able to account for twenty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six cubic feet of stormwater collection, which equates to one hundred and ninety-five thousand three hundred, I'm sorry, seven hundred and thirty-four gallons of water. The chambers alone account, this one right here, coupled with the runoff from this, account for one hundred and one thousand one hundred and twenty-one gallons of water. So the existing system that they have in place now is about six hundred and thirty-four cubic feet in total, and is only right down here at the bottom. So this new, as built, will have a capacity one hundred and sixty percent greater than the one that we have right now. Like I said, it's designed for the hundred-year storm. And lastly, because this is equally as important, we wanted to highlight the robust planting plan that we've proposed. And lastly, because this is equally as important, we wanted to highlight the robust planting plan that we've proposed for the hillside. This is really derived from our many, many conversations with the White Pond Advisory Committee. We proposed a hillside, including a mixture of 55 new large caliber deciduous trees, and then several evergreens here along the buffer for the butters, and then a mixture of nearly 50 low lying shrubs, which are depicted here in the blue. Again, pink, just for your knowledge, are the areas that are the, you know, rest areas or ADA areas with benches along the walkway. Once these are all installed, a hydro seed mix for the shady hillside will be laid in order to create a strong understory for native plants. So in terms of budget projections, we're carrying about 588,000 for the roadway improvements, the ADA pathway, the retaining walls, the gates, railings and pull off areas. So that's what we're calling the hardscapes. We're carrying 155,000 for the purchase of the actual stormwater basin system, so the materials, the drains, and any of the sub base that we need to put in, rocks and crushed stone in aggregate. We have $145,000 for earthwork, fill, and other resource area protection. So we're going to put up a pretty robust and built in fencing along several different portions of the slope. So as we're designing the stormwater, invariably it will rain, making sure that we're catching that and not just creating a a greater, you know, slick down the both the roadway and in the hillside. And then we have 135,000 for plantings and seeding efforts. We've also included a standard 3% escalation for FY '22 pricing, 12% contractor overhead and profit. We're carrying the highest number, usually is between eight and 12. We figured this is going to be a pretty neat project and we're pretty hopeful that we're going to be seeing pricing for earthwork similar to what we've seen with Jero. Jero came in at 8%. So we're carrying the high number, but we're hopeful for the lower number. And then we have a 10% contingency, which is pretty standard. So we're projecting somewhere between 1.23 and 1.35 million. To date, we have 750,000 between capital and CPC. About 6 million of that is really earmarked for construction. We had to spend some of that to get rid of the old restrooms that were here and then obviously for design and permitting. So should favorable action be taken at town meeting related to the capital and CPC articles that are in front of everyone, we'll have an additional 800. So this will provide a fund balance of 1.4. And like I said, our high estimate is 1.35. So I think we're able to accomplish both stormwater and ADA AAV accessibility after this fiscal year. And and then I think we will kind of wait and watch and see what happens and see how people are using the property. And if we need other amenities, we can certainly come back and talk about that. And if people are happy with this, then this would be a one phase project.
All right, Jane. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Kate. And thank you, Ryan, and thank you, whole team. As the liaison to the White Pond Advisory Committee, I've been steeped in this for quite a while. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions that I know the advisory committee is still turning around because I I want to put them out here into the public record. First off, since one of our climate change goals and sustainability goals, it's it doesn't exactly, it doesn't call this out, but the more we learn, the more important it's becoming. How, what surface are we going to, is the is proposed to be used for all of the trail pieces? I know that there's concern about the amount of of non pervious cover. Where as of right now, obviously, and as of history, there has been porous slope. So that's question number one. Question number two is, will the beach be accessible despite the fact that this, until this is all in place, we will not be ADA compliant nor and and potentially there will be some construction?
Is that just a two?
That's all I'm going to do.
Okay, so the the only areas of pavement are the existing parking lot, which we're actually not touching, just restriping. We are going to have to repave the driveway that is going down because we're not only tearing that up, but we're putting the infiltration basin underneath that. But it isn't an addition, it's a replacement. So the only additional hardscape that we're putting in that would be what they consider, you know, impervious would be the ADA walkway. So it is because I kind of thought someone was going to ask this question. It is 1,031.5 feet. So we are putting in about 1,000 or two tenths of a mile of a winding trail that's 36 inches wide that meets ADA. We have talked at late this, between the planting and this this pathway, as you know, you've been at the meetings. We've talked a great deal about all kinds of different things that we could use. I will say, you know, Ryan really went out and vetted quite a few of those and I can let him talk to that. But we're really trying to figure out and have something that is able to be maintained by he and his crew during all of the seasons and is affordable. And so there is some crushed stone dust. There are some matting that you can put in with stones. But it requires a really great deal of maintenance. So I don't know, Ryan, if you wanted to chime in on that.
I mean, I I can tell you some of the reasons why we didn't think the stone dust would be a great idea for that walkway. One would be we will get weeds. There will be a lot of maintenance to it. And we can't use herbicides to to maintain the weeds in it. And as she said, it's over 1,000 feet. It's going to take a lot of on your hands and knees to keep that clean. And and we don't really have the labor force to to manage that. Two, I mean, we will still get some washout from the stone dust or just, you know, the stone dust being kicked off of the pathway onto the onto the hillside that we would want to keep clean. And and also important, I think because it's a public park, we'd like to we'd like to allow the use of of that park even in the winter if possible, but I can't, I can't keep the roadway, the state roadway down to the ramp cloud simply because I can't salt or sand it, keeping cars from sliding all the way to the bottom and and causing an issue down there. So I'd like to be able to snow blow the walkway and allow people access to to the pond for ice fishing, ice skating, whatever they want to use it for. And and that's probably the safest and best way for me to do it is to to maintain that walkway. It's going to be tough to maintain that walkway with stone or 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 stone dust or whatever we decided to use, just because it'll be digging in. So we were just figuring it might be a little safer if we just kept it as asphalt. So those are some of the reasons behind why we were thinking going that direction.
So I will say the original plans had some impervious surface that was in those pull off areas. It also had a complete set of granite stairs going down. And just, if you give me one second, just to go back, you can see all of these blue areas are what we're putting stone dust in. And we're only putting granite stairs, basically where the incline is such that we we couldn't get away with having stone dust because it would just, it wouldn't stay, it would slide down. So I think we we tried to do our best to meet in the middle of what is reasonable. This is an area that Ryan felt like his parks crew could maintain, you know, fairly well, even if it has to be done by hand seasonally. As far as weeding, clearly, I mean, that's much different from from this whole area. We put in the non porous pavers here, which hopefully, you know, helps that. And then the decking was was changed over to decking with slats that is is able to, you know, have more stormwater runoff and a more natural look. So we certainly, we certainly tried. And the second question about beach being accessible. So we don't, we're not going to do any work during what is the typical swim season. So effectively, should we have favorable action at town meeting, nothing would start other than the tree protection and and some of the stormwater management or hillside erosion control. That would start, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't really impede anybody's enjoyment because they're in areas that aren't programmed right now. We would start in the fall. And the first thing that we would try to do is put in some of the infiltration basin so we can try to have something in place for the spring season when it rains a great deal. Then we would do some more work and, you know, I'm ever hopeful that we would be done for the most part before the swim season. But if we're not, we would probably pause and pick it up the following fall so that people can enjoy it. As far as permitting, because I think I heard that from from the White Pond Advisory Committee, we we have petitioned every year. We've gotten a public bathing beach license. And with that, I always submit what our, what the town's goals are as far as funding and planning wise to become compliant. And so we've always had the ability to be able to get our permit with the understanding that we're actively working to, you know, raise and appropriate the money in order to become both code and ADA compliant. And so if for whatever reason we were to abandon those plans, then yeah, we would not be able to get a license as a public bathing beach. And that would have, you know, implications insurance wise and some other things. I answered that question a little bit, a little bit more robustly for WPA. And so I'm I'm happy to the the committee, I'm sorry, White Pond Advisory Committee. So I'm happy to forward that email if the board thinks that that would be helpful too. But there's no, you know, cutoff date necessarily. It's something that the state wants to know that we are actively working to, you know, phase in the appropriate accommodations.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Kate? Or Ryan? Well, we thank you both for all the work that's gone into this plan. I mean, it's been enormous. And you certainly have gone the mile in terms of the public meetings and working with the committee and wish you good luck with the NRC and going forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, committee nominations, there are none. So I would ask the clerk to read the committee appointments. Susan, you're on mute.
Okay, I apologize. Thomas swam of 28 Central Street to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire on April 30th, 2024. John Kratzely of 10 Edmunds Road to a second term on the Community Preservation Committee to expire on April 30th, 2025. Elizabeth Akersmore of 86 Holdenwood Road to a second term on the Zoning Board of Appeals to expire on April 30th, 2024. Andrew Boardman of 110 Hill Caress Road to the Planning Board for a term to expire April 30th, 2026. Josh Galper of 65 Stone Road Lane to the White Pond Advisory Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2024.
Okay. Yep. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escudado?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hutchkiss?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
The chairman of the chair, so declares. Thank you. Committee liaisons and reports, as I recall, we had one only last week that was essential in terms of timing. And the rest of us had to pass on those. Again, I would just ask that you keep them as succinct as possible and especially items that are relevant at this point, point leading up to town meeting. So who would like to go first? Susan, we don't want you to break your record. We all, we all wait for you to raise your hand.
Okay. The Historical Commission met on the 27th and excuse me, it was a fairly straightforward meeting. There was a presentation by or a conversation with the owner of 325 Machada Road about there are two garages about possibly wanting to demolish one of them. And but there's not been a there's no demolition delay paperwork filed yet. It was just for the owner to get an idea of where the, what the board was thinking about the two structures, one of which goes very well with the brick structure with the brick home and the other which is a wooden structure, which is not as historically important. On June 22nd, this is actually a planning board, but they talked about it at Historical Commission. There's, there's a public forum on the Thoreau Business District proposed possible zoning bylaw changes. Melissa, the chair, Melissa Sawfield, current chair, is going to look into possibly holding historic issues coffees. The Planning Board met on the 25th and they talked about we had a couple of approval not required applications and and they talked about, you know, town meeting presentations. And also about Article 31 and Article Article 31. The Trails Committee met on the 25th. They're really, those people do an incredible amount of work. It's really it's really they need to be commended for they're out there. Those stewards are out there all the time checking on the trails and reporting trees down and all sorts of other conditions that that would impede using the trails by pedestrians and or bicycles. Oh, the Council on Aging, they're Ginger went through in in good detail, as Stephen reported a couple, a week or so ago, on the reopening plan and how you have to first time you go in, you check in, you show your vaccination certificate. And then you don't have to show it after that. Alice Kaufman came to the meeting to talk about Article 31, which is about the green not allowing fossil fuel and new construction. And then the other topic they talked about, which came up at the very end, but it was about the impact of the middle school project on taxpayers, which was of interest, of course, to everyone. Economic Vitality Committee met and they're putting together they're trying to gather data about impediments to being in business in Concord, be it in the, you know, permitting process or rent or whatever. So they're putting together a list of the areas that they want, the people that they want to speak to and whether they're going to, you know, have them come to the committee or interview or do a survey. So it's a fairly comprehensive project that that is kind of their focus now that we're hopefully in the entering as a post COVID area where we can focus on other things, all of us, including economic vitality. And the last thing was I attended the league meeting on the 19th and it was about town Articles for Town Meeting and Carmen was there to give direction and guidance on how town meeting is going to be structured and it was very, it was a, there's a lot of information. It was a good meeting. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Jane.
I will be brief, in part because many of our conversations tonight have already touched on several of the committees I'm liaison to, such as the White Pond Advisory Committee. I was at the Board of Health when the first point of discussion over what was then a brand new statement by the governor in terms of opening and release of masks, et cetera. And we began the conversation about impact on various town functions. And the the board was was expressing
board was expressing some frustration that the continued lack of coordination and communication until the sort of the last minute that has marked this whole process. And again, I want to extend a huge round of applause and thank you, not only to the Board of Health, but to Susan Rask and her team, because they have, you know, I can't imagine the number of hours logged and probably will be continued to be logged as we move into whatever the next phase is. So the also meeting where the Sustainability Energy Committee, which I had been co-chair of before I joined the Select Board and the Climate Action Advisory Board, I'm combining the two because in the center of both is Article 31 and the approaches to town meeting for the purposes of this report. They're all, both committees are working on many other important issues, but they're going to be discussed, I'm sure, in future Select Board meetings. The HDC met, and this meeting again this week, of interest to probably Concord in general, was the discussions over One Sudbury Road, which has been a long, you know, a long time point of question in terms of ownership and next phases of renovations. And there seems to be a huge round of applause from the neighborhood and from the HDC as to the way the new owners are approaching the improvements that they want to make to that house. And then finally, I would say that the Disability Committee also met and the, there were multiple points of discussion there, one of which is the need to continually coordinate with other town committees, as we've seen with the White Pond Advisory Committee and the Library Board, and we can keep going. But I think all of the committees that I have observed over the last six years have shown a remarkable knitting together since the issuance of our long-range plan. We have lots of work to do, but I just want to applaud every, every one of the boards for thinking beyond the former practices and looking for both coordination and efficiencies and communication. And, you know, as I said, it's a work in progress. But I think that's been, I've certainly seen it in all my committees. Thanks.
Linda?
Yes.
I'm sorry. There were a couple of points I forgot to mention. One is, following up on what Jane just said, the COA members have developed a schedule of liaison reports and includes the Committee on Disability as well as a number of others. But the other thing I forgot to mention is that Personnel Board is meeting tomorrow at 5:00. They attempted to meet last week and Thursday and didn't have a quorum, but there is a meeting scheduled for tomorrow at 5:00.
Thank you. Okay. Terry?
Okay. I can be brief. Yes. I tried to attend that Personnel Board meeting. Boy, they didn't get the quorum. So thanks for that, Susan. I also attended several League of Women Voters meetings where they had a lot of thoughtful discussion, took position on articles for the upcoming town meeting. And I attended a wonderful ceremony hosted by Margaret Kimball with the unveiling of the beautiful mural on the side of the Saltbox Kitchen. And I really urge everyone to go see it. It's fantastic. I attended a school committee meeting where the Capital Planning Task Force presentation was given and very well received. And we're going to be at the Select Board receiving that same presentation, I think, next week. Linda was unable to attend that meeting, so I'll just report a couple of other things that happened there at that school committee meeting. They had a very thoughtful discussion about whether to apply again for the MSBA. I don't think that we heard, we just heard the end of it, that we were asked to vote this evening on that. The school committee really was very thoughtful about the pros and cons of that. It took quite a while thinking it through. And at the following school committee meeting, they also discussed summer school plans, which are well along, and the end of the year budget, including refinancing some debt, saving 3.1 million, similar to what we heard on the town side from Kerry. And this will save about $200,000 per year. And then finally, I attended the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee meeting last week. And the two main topics were the CARES Act. There was a lot of confusion about the December 31st versus June 30th deadline, a lot of frustration about the confusion of schools. And the other topic was, as John Robertson put it, the home run that Zoom created by having greatly increased citizen participation with Zoom and how can we continue it? And that discussion led to quite a bit of pressure on the governor. And then within a day or two, he announced that he was filing that legislation that we all know about now. So the MMA Fiscal Policy Committee was very helpful on those issues. And that's it for my report.
Thank you, Terry. Matt?
So I attended the Recreation Commission meeting where we had a special guest of the Assistant Town Manager to discuss changes to the administrative code for the Recreation Commission. And we also discussed the long-range plan or strategic plan for recreation that might be combined with open space as a plan. And then there was a budget review that revealed that on the town side of the recreation programs, that they actually ended FY21 in the black, which was like a remarkable achievement, I think, and with expectation to remain in the black next fiscal year. The BD Center didn't fare as well as you might expect. And they are, you know, redoubling their efforts to try to attract more subscribers. And of course, as the reopening of society continues to progress and we get into the fall season, there'll probably be more opportunities there. So, but they are budgeting quite conservatively. I think that the bottom line is that though there still are adequate reserve funds available to see them through, and it does seem like they're emerging from the kind of financial struggles that they had to bear. They really got hurt the worst, I think, of all town departments within the COVID period. So then the only other thing that I attended, which you've already seen the results of, is the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. They're really doing final walkthroughs and planning for Memorial Day. But they're already starting to talk about the next events. So, you know, it just keeps going.
All right. Thank you, Matt. So I think two weeks ago, there was a chair's meeting and, you know, people doing a good job of anticipating vacancies so that they could be operational right after town meeting. That same week, the town manager and I testified before the State Legislature on the Home Rule Petition for Additional Alcohol Licenses. And last week was entirely day, night and into the next morning, preparing for town meeting materials that had to be submitted. So that's the end of my report. So miscellaneous correspondence is in the packet. Public comments? Are there any public comments? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Susan, you're on mute. Move to adjourn.
Second. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hutchkes?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.